Welcome to the called public joint meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners and Henry County Board of Education. Was supposed to start at 4:00 PM Tuesday, June 7th, 2011. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and I apologize for the delay. Technology can be a blessing and it can be a curse at times and unfortunately, we had a little technical difficulty getting started. With that being said, as I call my board to order, I'd like to ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries four zero. Mr. Preston?
Just like to call to order, special call of meeting for the Henry County Board of Education to meet with the Henry County Board of Commissioners to discuss, obviously, the voting redistricting maps. We're pretty much in session.
All right. Well, as a segue into the presentation, we, of course, got our census numbers back in April and, of course, Henry County surpassed the 200,000 mark, which is no surprise to most of us and something we were greatly looking forward to. But along with the census comes the responsibility of having to rebalance the districts. In looking at the census numbers that came in, it was noted that we had some districts that grew substantially and we had one district that represented 50,000 residents while another district only represented 30,000. And so, in order to try to rebalance those districts, we contracted the services of Linda Maggers, who is someone who is very experienced in doing this, having worked in this since, I believe, the seventies, and asked her to assist us with redrawing these lines and also our county attorney, Latonya Wiley. And Ms. Wiley is going to give a brief presentation and explain some of the dynamics that goes into redistricting after a census. Ms. Wiley?
As the chairman has stated, we are in the process, following the annual census, that requires us to redraw the district lines. And I wanted to talk about the legal principles that govern that process briefly. Basically, we have to comply with the one person, one vote requirement and that requires equal population within the various districts. We have to comply with Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act, which requires preclearance by the Department of Justice, so that we can ensure that we not have any change that has the purpose or effect of denying or abridging the right to vote of any minority group populations in each specific district. We have to comply with the non-discrimination standard of Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act, which prohibits any plan that has the effect of reducing the opportunity of members of a covered minority to participate in the political process and to elect representatives of their choice. And finally, we are governed by the limitations on the use of race as a factor in redistricting as mandated by the United States Supreme Court. In discussing the one person, one vote requirement, it requires that each district be substantially equal in population. And I'm not going to read this verbatim, but basically, the county is required to attempt to have districts that are equal in population. Based on the 2010 census data, the total population of Henry County is 203,922. And the ideal size of Commissioner district should now contain 40,784 electors in each district. That's the ideal population and is aligned at by simply dividing five into the number of districts, into the number of population growth. And this chart shows the population by district by the 2010 census. And as you can see, each of the districts have grown substantially. The bottom chart, which I'll show in just a moment, will show that growth. But under the current census requirements, District 1 has 48,842 persons residing within that district. District 2, which is the largest district, has 50,849. District 3, 39,029 persons. District 4, actually, which is the smallest district, has a population size of 32,266. And District 5 has a population size of 33,296. So we're required to have a deviation of not greater than 10%. And as you can see, based upon these numbers, the total maximum deviation for the five districts is 45.56%, which is well above the maximum allowable deviation. And I pulled the numbers I got from the state redistricting office, which shows what our numbers were following the 2000 census. This is the map that was agreed upon and the district sizes that were agreed upon and voted upon and approved by the Department of Justice. And as you can see, look at the numbers, have grown substantially. By way of example, District 2 went from 24,010 years ago to 50,000 persons in 2010. The next requirement that we will have to adhere to is Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act. Since 1965, Georgia has been designated as a covered jurisdiction under the Federal Voting Rights Act. And that requires all jurisdictions to preclear any changes to voting standards, practices, or procedures before the change can become legally effective. And we send everything, we got everything that we do that will end up on the ballot or affecting voting, has to go to the Justice Department. So normally, preclearance can be accomplished in either of two ways. It can be accomplished by submitting the plan to the Department of Justice for approval or filing suit in federal district court in Washington DC. It's always been our practice to send the items to the Department of Justice and they undertake a review. And it's less costly and more efficient. The Department of Justice, when it undertakes its review, it'll review the map to determine whether the new plan has the purpose or the effect of denying or abridging the right to vote on account of race or color pursuant to the Voting Rights Act. And this is what's called as the retrogression standard. And it considers whether a minority group has been made worse off by a proposed change in voting standards, practices, or procedures, such as a redistricting plan. So the DOJ will look at the totality of the plan and the burden will be on the county to assure that there is as little retrogression that has occurred as is reasonably feasible considering all the circumstances. However, I should know, it's very important that the Supreme Court has made clear that the DOJ is not to apply any other standards when undertaking its review. The next part of our legal obligations will be to comply with Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act, which prohibits any practice or procedure from having the effect of reducing the opportunity of members of a minority group to participate in the political process. And as a practical matter, this just means that you can't pack minorities into a single district in an effort to limit their voting strength or fracture or crack minority populations into small groups by spreading them throughout a number of districts. So there's no magic number that designates the threshold of packing or cracking and instead, each plan must be judged on a case-by-case basis. The Supreme Court has made it clear that the Department of Justice cannot use race as a predominant factor when it's reviewing the plan for preclearance. So what we're have to do is to balance, in light of all the circumstances, whether or not the map that is being proposed and offered is the best one that is taking into account a number of different factors in sending it up to the Department of Justice. Race can only be used to the extent that it narrowly tailored to achieve a compelling state interest. And the court has held that complying with Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act is a compelling state interest. So with those principles in mind, Linda Maggers undertook to engage in the act of looking at a various number of options and coming up with one that will satisfy these criteria to the best extent possible.
Good afternoon. I've met the county commissioners, but I don't believe I met all the school board members. So hello to you. Are we going to put that one up there? As you listen to Latonya, you realize that there's a lot of factors to be taken into consideration and so when you start drawing the map, it's just not a matter of simply drawing the geography where we might like it, but meeting the legalities that we have to meet in order to get a plan precleared and enacted and so we can hold an election on it in 2012. The plan that you're seeing, I think some of you probably have the smaller maps that are a little bit more clear. They're very pastel colors on my screen, but when I put them on the projector, sometimes the colors get really muddy. This plan was the result of two or three efforts before we could meet all the criteria that were in everybody's mind. As you heard Latonya say, we had a deficit of an overall deviation range of 45.56% that had to be cured. And it usually happens, I don't know if this is going to reach that far, but the two districts in the south, Districts 1 and 2, were the districts that had a vast surplus of population. The districts in the north, 4 and 5, were the ones that were short in population and 3 sitting there in the middle was the one district that probably we could have left alone, except that it sits there and gets impacted. It's what I call the domino effect, is that once you start correcting the other district, those districts and lines start moving and everything got affected. This district meets the one person, one vote. We went from that 45.56% down to an overall deviation of 6.33%. It, I think, meets the criteria for the Voting Rights Act. We have District 5, that is a minority district, at, let me get my finger in the right place, 52.84%. You've got District 4, which is a strong district, that's 41.47%. It also keeps each of the incumbents of the school board and the county commission in their districts now. The law also tells us that we cannot shorten anybody's district. So it's important that we keep the incumbents in the districts where possible. So that is not a legal requirement from the Justice Department standpoint. It's kind of low on their list as far as incumbency, but it is important, from a state law standpoint, that we not shorten terms. So we've done that. There's a lot of things that, as we worked on the lines and saw that, I showed some of them, that some things just look like it's going to be really easy to make a change and we have to deal with the census geography. And sometimes those blocks are not what we think of as city blocks, a nice, compact little square, but when you touch that census block, it lights up for miles and takes in a lot of area, can take in two or three department complexes and all of a sudden, you realize we can't go in that direction. So this is the one that best meets the needs right now that we've come up with. It's what we're presenting today. Are there any questions or comments at this point? Geography or anything else? I will tell you that it splits, I think it's a few precincts, seven or nine, I can't remember now. I think Ms. Shalnot's going to address that. But that usually happens during redistricting. I have stayed on major, where I have split precincts, though I did stay on major geographical features, so it would be easy to explain the lines to constituents if they called in and for the incumbents or for the school board members and county commissioners to be able to easily identify, you know, where their district starts and stops, et cetera.
Any questions from anybody? Janet, are you going to talk about the precincts?
Good afternoon. And it's good to have all, well, 10 of you together, because there's a lot of going back and forth these past couple of weeks. And as Director of Elections, I have intentionally tried to stay out of the line drawing. Yes, I have looked at the maps, but it was after they were drawn and, because if somebody doesn't like them and they would happen to lose their seat and I drew the lines, who are they going to sue? Probably me. So I tried to stay out of the line drawing. And basically, I don't have a problem with any of the maps that Linda has come up with. And I understand there's another map from Mr. Bowman and Steve, but as long as we could agree on a map, both the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners, and do not split those particular lines, because that would make havoc of our ballot styles. 10 years ago, we only had four splits. That's it. We have 56 right now. I mean, total splits, by the time you do your congressional, your House, your Senate. Now, that was like, to me, they threw up a box of spaghetti and wherever it landed, they drew a line. They did not follow any of our lines. I'm hoping, this year legislative-wise, y'all do us a little better. And it's not really the Senate and the House as much as it is the congressional. Of course, we don't have those maps yet, but they're the ones that usually rip us apart a lot more. Our county lines, now, we have 16 splits, just within the commissioned districts. The map Linda has worked on brings us down to nine or 10. We will get plenty more splits before it's all over with. And for those that don't understand what a split is, it's where any line crosses, whether it be House, Senate, congressional, commission, Board of Education, that changes the ballot style. You might live on the right-hand side of the road and have Senate 10, you might be on the left-hand side of the road and be Senate 17. And wherever a line crosses, and we went from four to 56 10 years ago. So I'm hoping to maybe, you know, get a little less than that. But we also have a time, a very short period of time. We got the map, I believe, in March, maybe 10 years ago. Where's Linda? It was March, maybe, and had to have it in place before the people ran for office with the July ballot. That gave us less than two months. And we didn't have the technology we have now. We had to do it by hand, street by street by street. Luckily, now we have technology that when we enter a voter into our system, it tells us its ballot style right there. It'll tell us the Senate, House, congressional, whether they're in the city limits or not. So thankfully, ballot styles don't upset me near as much as they used to, because we can work with that. But I sure would like to keep the Board of Education and the commission lines together, because we will end up with over 200 splits, I guarantee you. Because Clayton County did it and I saw what happened to them. Any map that, whether it be the one that we're about to look at or the one that Linda has worked on, I think I can be in agreement with if they meet the requirements of what is needed. And to me, the requirements are, let's have our numbers where they need to be, because the Justice Department, I can tell you, they will kick back something. You can't do 80%, 20% when you have a diverse county. And that's the one thing that I found out, I was very surprised at the census numbers in some areas. Linda explained it well today when we were talking. You know, years ago, it wasn't diverse as it is now. It used to be around cities. They would actually have to go and look and get areas to make the minority numbers where they needed to be. Now, Henry County has grown tremendously in the past 10 years, 15 and 20. And when the census numbers came out, I looked and I went, my goodness. You know, we have good numbers all over. As a matter of fact, I think they had a rather hard time finding a minority district, you know, when they were drawing it, to have one that was completely a little bit above. But if you look at the numbers, they're in the 40, 50, you know, they're very close. I do know the Justice Department will ask questions. Now, the amount of material they're going to be getting, everybody piling in at one time, and being one of the seven states that is up under the Justice Department, they will look at things. And I'd love to get it the first go-round, if we could, because that gives us time to at least get that in place, maybe, before the rest comes. I know Linda's map does stay on main highways. It also tries to, what we call nesting, nesting where they don't cut slap through the middle of a subdivision if we can avoid it, because that people that are campaigning have it upset, sign on this side of the road, not on that side of the road, when you're in the middle of a subdivision. So you look at a lot of factors in drawing. You can't just take a box of crayons out and draw a line. But any map that y'all produce, that y'all can get everybody close to agreement, and I don't think it has to be 100%, but I'd like to try to make everybody happy. And, you know, that's hard to do, because everybody has opinions, but if we can get the population, the numbers right, make the Justice Department sign off on this thing, and y'all halfway happy, I'll be happy. I can put it into place if y'all can get it to me without splitting those BOE and the VOC lines. Okay? Any questions?
Any questions for Janet? At this time, I believe Mr. Bowman is going to make a presentation. And as an introduction to that, you can draw, you could play with this map all day long and you could, it's funny, if you click out a block, it changes the numbers, as Linda said. Trying to look at the requirements of the Justice Department and make sure all those things line up as good, but also, another factor going into this is can the incumbents live with their districts? Do those districts reflect community? And in Mr. Bowman's case, he was a little bit concerned, because he goes from Kellytown to Stockbridge to McDonough in a horseshoe shape and he wasn't quite sure that he could fully represent that vast majority of citizens who have a wide array of needs. And so, he's also been working with the state on a map that he would like to present, that he feels like can help address his concerns and still meet the intent of what we have to meet with the redistricting. Mr. Bowman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll step down to the board and just kind of review some of that information. I do not have the streets on this to get this here prepared, if you just got that off. But as Madam Chair was talking about, if you take a look at this map, it's a big horse. Everybody else is pretty contiguous to their area, but District 4, it kind of rambles around and it is, it is, would be a little tough on the commissioner representing. And also, it would be, in my opinion, it'd be a little tougher to do. So I've been working with some guys at the state. And we've come up, one night, I have a map done that shows the streets, that I've come around, you got a small one, but we'll add one to the street. And basically, all we did is we pulled it up, and if you look at this map, it looks more contiguous. I mean, it looks like they fit where they are and where they belong. The first map actually split nine precincts. This map splits seven precincts. The first map, I think, had one area that was 6% plus or minus, I think, on the diversity. And this one, the largest one, I believe, is 1.8%. So it's a lot closer to, you know, to the other districts. I mean, it's actually, when you look at it, and the numbers-wise, and I'm looking at it upside down, so forgive me, but these work out, it just works out tremendously better. We've got one, it keeps all of the school board members with exceptional one, which is Eric Charles in their district. It really just takes a little bit away over here to Timber Ridge and basically, I don't want to say squares up the district, but it makes a difference. Do I have to start off? I'll come around here. Okay. Do you want me to start off? I will just kind of briefly go over what I just said. The first map had a horseshoe effect. This particular map has a more encompassing, for lack of better terminology, just a straightaway district. The people that's represented have similar interest in the communities. In this map, we've got, as opposed to being in McDonough, almost in McDonough City, Stockbridge City, and then swinging around, we picking up Kellytown now. In this particular instance, District 3 would, actually, District 3 lines up a little bit better also, but from the number standpoint, like I said, I think it was six points, something 33, I believe, in one district.
I think there was some deviation.
Oh, the overall, well, it's 1.8 is the maximum difference between population. I think if, I mean, I can look at it from here and see, like, District 5's 40,034, District 4's 41,099, District 2's 40,763, District 1's 40,456, and District 3's 41,570. This is a map that I've had several meetings with and trying to come up with something that I felt like that I personally could live with, as opposed to being the representative of the fourth district and having, I understand that you don't do them, I understand that there are some conversation about not worrying about geographics, but the ones that don't worry about geographics are normally the ones that's never served anything, so they don't have to worry about, I mean, geographics from that standpoint. So, you know, that's just, this is one I'm just opening up. I wished I had the streets on it. They're actually printing them now. We had a glitch in the one from the time we sent it from the state to here and it's just taken a long time, but I would like for us to at least take this one under consideration. Just as if anybody else, if any other board member were to come before the board and have one drawn up, I think it should be taken under consideration. And that's all I'm asking for. Madam Chair.
Did anyone have a question or comment about anything that's been presented by Mr. Bowman, before we move on?
This is our first time seeing it. And most of the maps we've seen, we can see where all of our, where everybody is, the county commissioners, as well as where we are. And you said Eric is being displaced?
Eric's, yeah, well, actually, there's two being displaced. I said one, I apologize. Board Member Davis would be, well, in both maps, I think, your district.
Which puts a lot of districts. Five becomes four.
Five becomes four.
Because we're switching board members, I guess, with commissioners.
And four becomes five.
So each incumbent still stays in their own district.
So nobody's overlapped and nobody's, so you're not going to have two people in the same district?
No.
Okay.
No, I think Charles and Pam, their districts are set where they are. Eric and Ryan are the two that would make a change.
One of the things that I see with this is that, you know, just like what was mentioned earlier, we all have a relationship with the people that elected us to office. And then if I'm displaced, like Mr. Preston said, then I have to build, I serve everyone, period, whether the line's fourth or fifth or whatever, but I still have that relationship with the people that put me in office. And so, for me to be displaced out of my district, which is currently four, I don't think that aligns with what was said earlier, with what Latonya said in the, whatever, the things that would come with setting up this map for the...
You also have to keep in mind that we were below, so either way, we're on to grow some.
Mm-hmm.
So we're on to take on more than we previously have.
I think that Eric, though, I understand what you're saying and I... I think that Eric, though, I, I understand what you're saying, and, and I, you know, and I, I appreciate it, and, uh, but, and, you know, in the new map, we're all gonna be representing people we never represented before. I mean, look at me, I'm gonna be representing people down in McDonough and people over in Kellytown. I never had them in, you know, in the last, uh, five years, I haven't had those. So, I mean, I'm, I'm, uh, gonna have to pick up and, and, you know, represent others, irregardless of how the map is drawn, the, the fact that we're gonna have to represent somebody else. I mean, not being displaced, I think, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I don't know that, I don't know that not being misplaced is, 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 because the, the issue is, if your issue is you're gonna be representing people that you don't know, you know, the, the issue is, we're all gonna be representing people that we don't know, because we're gonna be moving around, except for you two guys that are, you know, down there, are way map, and you too. Y'all are, y'all all three are kind of down in, well, no, I'm not, you know, but y'all are down in that south area that didn't, I mean, on the other map hardly got changed. I mean, you know, it did at one time, but it's, but it hardly got changed on this go-around. Seems like most of the changes are in the north end, and probably as they should be. I mean, they said, "Well, District Four only has 32,000 people," but that, that's okay, District Four only has 32, but in 2000, when the map was drawn in 2000, 32,000 people is a lot of people in Henry County. So, you know, I can't help it, because no more moved in, that everybody kept moving to the south end of the county. I mean, that's...
They, they found out that God's country is the south.
And I tell you, the mix, when you, when you look at the numbers of, of minorities all through the county, I mean, this county, you know, it, it's got, it's a good, as, as Janet was saying, I mean, it's a good situation to have. We're not like Fulton County, where one end of the county's one way and the other end of the county's totally different. Henry County's got a good, broad, uh, diversity as it stands. So, you know, I don't know that that would be, but I, I don't know how to answer your question, other than, you know, just from the standpoint of representing people, we're gonna be representing others, different people, no matter which way the map is drawn, because I feel the same way about going to McDonough. I mean, I, I don't even know a lot of, I, I'd have to get to where I know a lot of people, because as soon as that's adopted, I still got two years left on my term, and I'll be representing people that I don't know and haven't had any conversation with in six years, so.
I have a question. Linda, um, the initial map, um, that all the commissioners took a look at, I think, uh, the Kellytown area went from District Four to District Three, and I think we all...
We all agreed on that map, correct?
We agreed, in theory, that we liked the map, um, but we did not agree to approve the map, because we did, that's something we couldn't do until we have a public hearing on it, and we were in consensus with the Board of Education as well.
And, um, the word diversity came up a number of times today. So, uh, in that map, I think District Five was somewhere around 52% diversity, and District Four was somewhere around 46, 47%. Then, um, we all kind of agreed on it, and then, uh, a new map was drawn. So I just wanted to know what, what prompted the new map?
The map that you're referring to, uh, did not keep each of the incumbents in a separate district. We had two school board incumbents together in that plan, so we shifted the lines somewhat to accommodate the, the school board incumbents, in the hopes that we could keep the county commission and the school board lines the same.
Okay, so in that map, what was, what was the diversity count in that map, in District Four and Five?
In District, uh, Four, it's 41.47%, and in District Five, it's 52.84.
Okay. And this new map, so we had, so we had pretty much two districts that were over 40%.
Yes.
Diversity. But with this map, we're looking at only one district.
Are you talking about?
This map right here.
Yeah, I, I don't know the numbers on this one.
Is that straight?
So basically, um, between the first map and this map, we're looking at pretty much a 10% change in the, in diversity. So read that, with all due respect, I, I can't support this map, but I will support the, uh, initial map you put up today.
What were the, um...
The other minority numbers? I can't, um, I can't read this.
I can't.
It's way too long, but...
Would you like me to help you?
Commissioner, which map are you talking about supporting? The one where it had Kellytown in District Three, or?
Yeah, the initial, the initial map that was, that she put up today, earlier.
The one right before this one?
Yeah, correct.
You got, uh, on this map, you've got District One at 31.8, District Two at 36.37, District Three at 32.63, District Four at 36.82, and District Five at 54.72.
But there's other minority numbers. We're looking at, um, percentages of all or part black, but, but you also have, I was wanting to know what, because you also have other minorities with...
There's almost 11% other.
11%?
Right.
And that would be...
It includes Hispanic and Asian and Indian and...
So it does put you over the, it does put you at, right at 50% or 36?
Puts us up about 47, 48%.
47, 48%.
Yes, ma'am. The plus or minus, now, I don't know the exact number, but it puts us up there around 40, 47, 48% when you count the other. This is strictly the black portion.
Do you know on the other map what the percentage of minority was? Let's see.
I think they were very similar, but I don't, I don't, no ma'am, I don't recall that. I've, I've had so many numbers running through my head lately, so...
That's not on here, really. It's to- total number, but it's not showing a percent. Okay, all right, got you. Yeah, those numbers were pretty similar.
Can y'all read those, those numbers from the previous map? Because we, you know, from the map that was previously presented to this map, because this one has numbers on it.
This one doesn't have them on it. I think you've got them.
Uh, which numbers would you like for me to read to you?
Madam Chair, I'm gonna come back to the podium, because I'm, I'm through with mine. I always wanted to put something, I just wanted to put a proposal up for, uh, everybody to look at.
Okay.
On the, on the previous map, uh, District One is 39,090 people, which is a minus 4.15%. 39,090.
Okay.
Um, it's a minus 4.15, and it's 24.05% black. District Two is 41,222, which is a plus 1.07%, and it's 36.32% black. District Three is 41,022, which is a minus .58%, and it's 36.41% black. District Four is 40,915, which is a minus .32%, and it's 41.47% black. District Five is 41,673, which is a plus 2.18%, and it's 52.84% black.
All right, I don't, um, I don't know if anybody has any further questions about either of the maps that were presented.
Let me just make a comment.
Mr. Holder.
Um, in, in referring back to the horseshoe, Mr. Bowman, and I understand you, you going from Kellytown to Stockbridge, back to McDonough, but in the map that, that Linda has presented, I want you to look at District One when you're talking about diversity. I go from Blacksville, portion of McDonough, to Snapping Shoals, join with Newton Butts in Spalding County, back to the most rural area of the county, to Locust Grove, to the south, to Aharon Bay, to almost to Hampton. So, I mean, it, it looks almost like a horseshoe in itself. So, I mean, these, these districts are crazy, uh, and, and that's, that's just the way it is. Uh, it, it, it just happens. Um, I don't know, I don't know which district, uh, which, which one that we will choose, uh, none of us do, but it's diverse for everybody.
Oh, I, I know it is, Commissioner Holder, but, uh, your map is, doesn't look a lot different from the last one. I mean, there's, there's some changes, but I mean, it's, uh, it don't look a huge amount different.
Well, one of the reasons, though, is because the shift had to take place, because Districts Four and Five did not grow at the rate that Districts One and Two did, so that it had to shift, and those had to stay close to the same.
But that, what I'm saying is, but you've represented those people, the majority of the people in your district, you've represented for a pretty good while, haven't you? The majority.
I hope I have.
The majority.
I, I just hope I have.
Hey, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying, I'm getting, I'm getting this horseshoe effect that's gonna pull me down to, you know, down to McDonough, and, you know, back over to Kellytown, and yours, I, I see what you're saying.
I really do.
But on the side of it, you've had opportunity to represent a lot of those people for a long time, as well as District Two that's pretty similar.
Well, and District Two's losing a portion of theirs, too.
Right. I don't, I don't really have a problem. Okay.
Well, this, the meeting today is for informational purposes only, because we can't, we, we're not in a, I don't think any of us are ready to, um, adopt, um, any, any one of these scenarios today, but we wanted to start having the conversation, um, in order to try to come to a, a consensus. My goal for the Board of Commissioners is to hopefully adopt a map by the, uh, third Tuesday in July, and we will, that'll give us an opportunity to get that transmitted up to our legislators, who will have to take a look at that in the special session, I believe, is it August the 14th? August the 15th? And, um, how many days will you be meeting? Do you know?
Till you get done.
Till you get done? Okay, sometime around Christmas? Okay.
Madam Chair, one other time, and I forgot to put it on there, I had a, I've got some yellow sticky notes, but, uh, the deviation on the map that I presented is .01%, by the way. Whether that counts for anything or not, but it is that. But anyway, I'm good, I'm sorry that I didn't bring that up, but, uh, that's it.
Mr. Holder.
We, part of why we had this meeting is that we had several board members from the Board of Education that did want to make sure that we talked about this together, because I don't know when we will all get back in the room together, and there was discussion of, do we need to be the same voting districts as the county commissioners, or do we need to be separate? And I wanted to make sure all of the Board of Education members had an opportunity for, you know, that asked for, we have this meeting with you guys. Do y'all have your answers for, for any discussion points, so that we can look at the maps that we have now and, and go back and research and figure it out? Or do y'all need to ask the commissioners some more questions?
One question for Linda is, does that perfect deviation, does that come into play with the DOJ? Because I think the first map, the highest deviation was 4 point something percent? And I think the highest on Commissioner Bowman's map...
Did that come into play with the Department of Justice?
Yes, ma'am. Is that determining, is that the main factor, or?
Not for the Department of Justice. They don't look at that as closely as they do the, the minority numbers. It becomes important if you were to be sued on a one-person-one vote, um, issue where they said that the plan was not fair because the population was not equal. The closer to zero a, a plan is, the best it is, the better it is. I mean, it's safer, the safest one for, from having a lawsuit. You can go larger than that, and they allow that plus or minus 5%, particularly when you get down to the smaller levels like cities and counties, because of the census geography, uh, in order to stay till a major thoroughfare, or to keep from splitting a subdivision, or whatever. Uh, so the 6.33 is, is good, but it could be, you know, it, the, the better, the smaller is better, but this is, I think, would, would pass muster with Department of Justice. And anybody suing you on a one-person-one vote suit would have to prove why this one, um, is discriminatory in some way, because of the population deviations. I, I think it would pass muster if somebody sued on it, but that's my personal opinion.
But you have District Five at a plus eight, right?
That's 1.8?
No, the largest deviation in the plan was a minus 4.15, and the largest, uh, plus
deviation was a 2.18, which is a overall 6.33.
And then Commissioner Bowman's is 1%?
His is smaller. That's what he was, that's what I think he was pointing out.
It's what I came up with, that we...
Yeah, you know, it's, it's gonna take a little time for me to put that up. Should be on there, though.
I'm not sure what your numbers are.
It's on the top.
That's not your map.
I think somebody moved it.
Oh, somebody moved my map?
I see the whole map right there.
Oh, I will. Somebody's already absconded.
You absconded my map?
Okay, on, on, uh, we, I think the biggest minus is a minus, it looks like 1.84, and the biggest plus is a 1.93, so that's gonna be, uh, 3 and some odd percent overall range.
Is that all the, for the map?
Uh, first map, the overall range is 6.33, and this one is gonna be 1.84 and 1.93, 3.77. So it's about three percentage points differences in the overall range.
So it's about 50%.
You got comments, Mr. Holder?
So everybody's got all the county commissioner questions to discuss?
So do you think we need to meet again on this, or this is it?
It probably, we could probably, if you wanted to schedule a public meeting jointly, it, it would probably be a good idea versus you having one and then the commission having, because it's the, hopefully it will be the same map. Um, I know our desire is to stay with the same districts as the Board of Education, because it makes it easier for our voters to understand who their representatives are and what district they're in. Um, so if we want to look toward, before the, our July, whatever that third Tuesday is, meeting in July, we can try to schedule one between now and then, and give everybody a week or two to look over both of the presentations, ask questions, and, um, see if we can build some type of consensus. I'd love to walk away with 11 people in agreement over one map. I think that would speak volumes to our community, and I don't, I don't think it's something that we can't do, if we work hard enough, I believe that we can build that consensus.
Is there any way to, done as be official, but get a vote between us to see just how far apart we are, how close we are on agreement?
I don't feel comfortable with that voting, whether we just...
Well, it's not a vote, it's just, I guess, which one we support, to see exactly how far apart we are on agreeing to something between the two of us?
Mr. Holder.
If I could say this, um, before I felt comfortable in even a consensus, taking a consensus vote, I would encourage that each voting member from the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners be given a district map with a, with a street overlay, so that we can tell exactly, in looking at these maps, and I know I don't have good eyes, but I, I know about where it is, and I, I don't think anybody knows that the county are a lot better than I do, but the point is, we need to know where these lines are drawn, and, uh, if we can blow it up to where it's big enough to see, and each person be given a copy of it, so that you can look at it and how it affects your respective district, I think it would mean a lot to me in, in taking a vote as to which one we want to adopt. That's my opinion.
Madam Chair, may I say, and I, I agree a hundred percent with Commissioner Holder, because you're right, there you can't, you can't tell what it is, but they are currently printing one, and if we, you know, if we're here a few minutes longer, then maybe I can get some smaller ones printed from those, uh, with the streets on them, and at least have one that maybe the board could, could, you know, take with them.
And they need to see one of both maps, so that we can look at it and see where those lines actually are.
Right.
And do it by, if you'll take it by each district, then it can be blown up large enough to where you can really look at it and see. Uh, if one district was as large as that map out there, it would be readable.
So is your preference to have an overall map showing all the districts, or each district representative to have just their district? Or both?
I would like both, but I, I, our main interest is the one that we're talking about.
We get both, we can get both.
Well, I, I, I a hundred percent agree. I, I think that, uh, you know, Commissioner Holder would be able, by doing...
by doing that, we would be able to, by doing it with just our district, with the ones that are proposed, you know, that, that makes it a lot simpler and a lot easier, and if, if we're going to have a community meeting, if we're going to have a town hall meeting, if we're going to have that kind of thing, then we can set that one up and say, this is our district, guys, this is what we're talking about. Of course, you got all these others that are going to be included, that could be included later on, so you can't just say, okay, District Four, you guys say it's going to be a town hall meeting for the map, because District Four could be, it could be the horseshoe then, or it could be the other one, it could be either, so.
Mr. Alata?
Just a question for the Board of Education, Board, just a question for you, you and your board. Prior to coming here, you had only seen one map, I believe you said you hadn't seen Mr. Bowman's map. Were you proposing to come with an alternative map, or suggestions for changes as a, as a board before you came here, or just inquiring this as everybody else to see what?
We'd had a public meeting to discuss the map that was, that you guys had tentatively agreed upon, and then we had some board members who had, at that meeting, suggested they'd like to come in and discuss some points of concern that they had, and so, I contacted Chairman Mathis and said, let's get together, so it's not back and forth, because it got to the point where the, the individuals with the issues were, you know, saying, well, we got to get the county commissioners involved in this, and that's why I just, that's why I was asking that question, is was there any points that have not been addressed by the Board of Education members that are here today?
That was going to be my question, so to the extent you've only seen one map, but there were issues, whether Mr. Bowman's map takes care of those or not, or those issues are still on the table, then you're saying you basically still have to work those differences out.
Or have you, have the board members asked the question of you guys, of the things that were bothering them of that original map? Because we didn't take any polls to see consensus, but we, there were a few members that were concerned.
My issues are resolved, I support Commissioner Bowman's map.
My issue, the map is.
But was your, let me ask you this, because I, this is the first time I'd seen Commissioner Bowman's map, but did you, were your issues resolved on the first map, though?
No, no, because again, I'm still being moved out of the district in which I'm currently in, to represent a different district, and again, I say that the people that I've come accustomed with, and drew their support over the years, I will not have those same people. So, again, I say, I don't approve any map.
So, neither map fits?
Right, this time, no.
Okay.
So, so to Mr. Commissioner, you just asked, are we going to come back with different changes? I don't know, what's the solution?
Well, let me ask, is that, your, your concern is about becoming, going from District Four to District Five, that, I think we got that. Mr. Davis, was, does your issue with the first map address?
Mine, mine's, my issues are resolved, yes.
With the first map, though? You know, because we, I had not seen Commissioner Bowman's map until today.
Yes, mine are resolved with the first map, but like I said, I support Commissioner Bowman's map.
Okay. Thank you.
What we'll do is, we'll make sure that every member has a large map with all the districts and the streets, or the proposed districts and the streets, and then both maps with individual districts blown up, so that we can all take a look at those and, and see what changes would affect us with either of those maps. So, we'll get those to you by the end of this week, so you'll have those available to study, and Chairman Preston and I can continue to have conversations about this, as y'all relay your concerns to him, and my board does vice versa, and with a goal to have a public meeting in July, where we can have citizens come in with input, we'll have the ability to display maps for them, for their review and for their comments, and hopefully reach a consensus at that time. And Representative Welch is standing in the middle of the aisle, so I assume that he has a burning comment that he would like to share, and I'm sorry I didn't recognize you.
No, Madam Chair, thank you, members of the Board of Education, members of the Board of Commissioners, no, I just wanted to remind you on behalf of the legislative delegation that there is going to be at the Merrill Manders Conference Center in Stockbridge on June 14th, there will be a public hearing hosted by the reapportionment committee that will be here in Henry County, and the public as well can attend, and that will be from 5 to 7 at Merrill Manders, and we invite everyone to attend. This will be to look at not the districts for the county, for the school board districts, but to look at state, House, and Senate districts, as well as the congressional districts. So, we invite you to attend, and hope there'll be a good turnout.
Thank you. If there are no further comments or questions at this time, I will ask for a motion from my board to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor, motion carries 4-0.
This is the Board of Education, I call this meeting.